and Nevis could have a comparative advantage relative to other nations. The establishment of several think tanks and other fora, including the recent competitiveness council, is testimony that there is an active effort to ensure that fresh ideas are brought to the table that can be converted into sustained economic growth and development of our country and people. The same challenges confronting the government have also confronted local business. And so the question can be asked, in such a small economy, how can a business be profitable and provide an annual return and capital growth? For several hundred years, our sugar agriculture-based economy provided significant returns to investors, which were mostly Europeans with funds going to develop Europe. In recent years, several other industries were tried, from non-sugar agriculture to light manufacturing, to call centers, financial services, and tourism, with varying degrees of success. In the last five years, the Citizenship by Investment Programme has evolved as a well-crafted citizenship programme and has placed us as a leader on the world stage, based not only on its longevity, but its comparable success. Our own citizenship programme has effectively capitalized on the global citizenship trust, which has developed as an industry around the world. What I'm saying is that the citizenship business has developed really as an industry around the world. It is not Saint Kitts alone that is doing it as a country. We have several countries in Europe and a few other countries in the Caribbean that's doing that now. In my estimation, our economic citizenship programme has been a boon to the development of Saint Kitts and Nevis. Sixty-seven real estate projects up to today have been approved and listed on the Citizenship by Investment Unit website, twenty-six in Nevis, forty-one in Saint Kitts, including Golden Rock Commercial Park. The economic spin-off from these projects will touch many subsectors in the economy, from general merchandise to legal services, banking services, cleaning heavy equipment, and I could go on and on. The benefits of this programme to an island nation has the capacity not only to create superstructures and expand infrastructure, but to create new commercial activities that could transform our economy. Our young people must begin to position themselves to create future businesses from all of the potential opportunities which will flow from these projects. And note I said, create future businesses, not just to work in those businesses alone, but to truly become entrepreneurs, because there will be opportunities for persons who can do many things. For instance, I believe with the trust we have in construction now, our architects can become more specialized. For instance, some of the renderings, et cetera, that we are doing that are being done off island because we don't have the expertise here locally, because we're in a position now where we have so much work around in that field, local persons can become engaged in this area. In my own development, there will be commercial spaces where local entrepreneurs can open business, whether as franchises or of their own homegrown ventures. But the programme is not without its challenges, and taken into consideration the heavy dependence on this revenue stream, we should pay attention to its constant improvement. As a programme which has the ability to attract a wide range of investors, care has to be taken to ensure that the nuts and bolts are tightened on the programme requirements. Improved due diligence procedures will help to reduce the chance of undesirables having access to the programme. This would require strong procedural changes and continued compliance with international regulations and guidelines. And I must say, as a service provider, during the last few weeks, we have seen several changes from the CIU, the Citizenship by Investment Unit, which we know will aid in improving the programme. And we hope that that will increase the turnaround time, because if we have a quicker turnaround time in the programme, we would have more investment flows in the country in a shorter span of time. We must not relax our standards in light of the fact that they are emerging destinations from which competition is coming. We think here of the nearby Antigua and Barbuda and Dominica in our own backyard, as well as other OECD islands which are contemplating similar programmes. Our competitors extend beyond the shores of the Caribbean and include several countries in Europe like Cyprus, Austria, and Malta, among others. Let us not fool ourselves that the success of our programme, which has become a world model, would not attract detractors. After all, we are a small country who has the audacity to lead in this global business. All the more reasons why every effort should be made to review and comply with the changes that have been highlighted to ensure the robustness of the programme. As an authorised service provider, we would also like to offer some suggestions for improving in the communication with the CIU. I think we had a meeting with them sometime a few months ago, about a month or two ago, and it was agreed that we would have a follow-up and regular meetings so that the communication can improve a bit, and we would be able to be in a position to better notify our clients. I think sometimes is when you do good and you can't do any more good because of constraints that you bring pressure to be on yourself. And I think that is one of the challenges that the CIU is facing now. It appears to us by the number of people we see visiting the office, et cetera, that the number of applications would have increased. I am of the firm view that the Saint Kitts and Nevis Citizenship by Investment Programme is solidly entrenched, one that just needs to be buffed and polished to maintain its luster. This three decades-old programme has evolved into an international model, which, as it advances, will continue to bring accolades to our island and its people. It is imperative that we guard its reputation fiercely and preserve the goodwill which we continue to derive. Viewed in the context of a product lifecycle, we could agree that our Citizenship by Investment Programme is in its maturity stage. The product is well-established, consumers are satisfied, and it is widely accepted. Before long, however, a successful product in this phase will come under pressure from The producer, in this case, the government, will have to start spending again in order to defend this product's market position or introduce extension strategies. What I do believe is that the Citizenship by Investment Programme is a very large business by any standard, and one of the things we believe that the government and the CIU need to look at that will enhance our position is doing more public relation efforts on that programme on an international scale. We think that is something that should be looked at and addressed in the short term. We must use creative strategies to starve off the last two stages and keep the product alive. I believe once this is done, this tiny island will continue to lead where countries, multiple times larger than us in resources and landmass, will use our experience from which to learn. I must give a small true story. About two weeks ago, I was on my way back to Saint Kitts from a promotional tour in China, and while I was in Miami on my way back, I happened to have on the local Miami television station, and there was this news article, and it was speaking about Qatar Airlines now making direct flights from Qatar to Miami, and it was a very big thing in Miami. The Miami Business Chamber, et cetera, were going to fly out to Qatar to come in on the inaugural flight, and they were making several overtures to businesspeople in Qatar to come and invest in Miami. And what came to my mind right away is that Saint Kitts had already outdone them with respect to that, because we ourselves had already reached out to Qatar to make investments in Saint Kitts. And it is at that time, I mean, that I realised that Qatar also has the highest per capita income in the world. So that was a good thing. In leaving you, closing the presentation, I'd like to play a small video clip that has been done by another developer. Those two small clips would give you some idea of how the Economic Citizenship Programme impacts the lives of our ordinary citizens. I myself and my development have not developed a marketing tool like that at this point in time, and I think we really should salute this developer, which has been the forefront in the Economic Citizenship Programme as it relates to real estate products, and it is the Cittison Hill. It just so happens that Cittison Hill is having a soft opening tomorrow. So I'd just like you to look at the clip that has been produced by them.
My name is Winston Lake, and I am the supervisor for the nursery at Cittison Hill. Well, I come from a family of farmers. I enjoyed working with soil and that sort of thing from the time I was five years old. I've been working with plants and animals ever since. Well, it's enjoying nature. I think no amount of money or anything could give me the pleasure that I get from such an environment. Give me my outdoor wastelands any day. It's exciting to know that I have well over sixty-five varieties of mango, somewhere in the region of fifteen varieties of banana, the same with avocados, and many other plants. And this is only scratching the surface, and I enjoy looking after them. Well, I hope I am not blasphemous, but it's just probably a little short of being a paradise. I think our guests who come to the island would be thrilled to find in their room every morning a nice bowl of fresh fruit and vegetables. They can always attribute it to Citticians and their hospitality.
My name is Leighton Mills, the owner, the director of Best Construction Company. Right now, we are at the site of Cittison Hill Development. You see all the walls, it is up at this moment. Once the roof is on, all you can think about your finishing now. Yeah, I think that people are going to be amazed when they see such magnitude of work, especially in terms of the construction, the strength of the construction, solid foundation in terms of the building that's going on around here, the big investment in construction area. Example, you take a look at it, at Cittison Hill, you know, it brings an effect onto the local contractors and too. Economy of the island, it will be booming much better, and the money will circulate much better in the country, will boom much better and boom much faster, because you have the local people then that carrying out this magnitude of work that is happening, and it's happening. It is good, it's a nice feeling to know you're here and you'll be part of what is happening in this country, my native country. I'm a part of it, to what is happening too, a big part of it, you become a builder.
We'd like to thank Mr. Keynes so very much for that. It was very timely, and we're going to move right along, but I need to let you know that, as I mentioned earlier, we're streaming this live on the internet for those persons who are listening. You can feel free to contribute as well to our conversation this evening. First thing you can do is visit skandlaborparty.com. There's also an email address that we've established. It's talkforprogress@gmail.com. You can send your emails to that address, and later down in the evening, I'll be able to read these out and get some, you know, comments from our panelists here, seeking some clarification for you on those issues you may wish it for. And also, there is a phone number I've been provided with. Let me pull up that very quickly and share it with you. It is 7631719. You can text us on that number and make your contributions to this evening's conversation there as well. Our next speaker this evening, certainly no stranger and a springtime candidate, he is coming in to take over and represent you well in constituency number three, Carlos Maynard. Mr. Maynard.
A pleasant good evening to all. How are you this evening? Honourable Prime Minister, Dr Denzel Douglas, Deputy Prime Minister, Honourable Dr Earl Assim Martin, Chairman of the Saint Kitts and Nevis, or Chairperson, sorry, of the Saint Kitts and Nevis Labour Party, Honourable Marcella Althea Leibert, who we are in her constituency today, the Honourable Glenn Philip, fellow springtime candidates, Dr Vance Gilbert, and Dr Terence Drew, former Minister of Government, Cedric Leibert. We have Scott Keynes here, prominent businessman at the head table. To the constituents of constituency number two, welcome. And to my beloved people of constituency number three, West Bastea, and other constituents represented here this evening, welcome. I want to first start this evening by thanking the Labour Party Government for nineteen years of sterling stewardship of our country, placing us at number one in the Caribbean. Marcella loves to say, you can't get better than number one. Number one in economic growth, number one in manufacturing exports, number one in per capita income in the OECD, number one in attracting foreign direct investment, number one. And with this slate of eight, we will continue to keep Saint Kitts and Nevis as number Now, we are present here this evening to what we call a series of conversations for progress, and at varying times throughout this series, the panelists will change, so everyone will get a chance to hear their own constituency representative or candidate at the time appropriate. So feel no fear that you're not hearing tonight from others on the slate. We have that all in line for you. And so, when we do get to constituency number three, we will deal with the specific constituency issues, as Marcella will do tonight for constituency number two. So tonight, I've been asked just to give a brief insight on what we feel about the issue of good governance in our country. And in recent times, there has been a lot that has been said. Now, I maintain that where there are perceived shortcomings, there must be sound and thoughtful constitutional reform. The Workers' League, the Saint Kitts and Nevis Trades and Labour Union, and the Saint Kitts and Nevis Labour Party, to me and to the country, represent the authors of our democracy in this country of Saint Kitts and Nevis. It was because of the agitation of these cornerstone institutions that we got adult suffrage in 1952, associated statehood in 1967, and for preparations for our independence in 1983. It was this Labour Government who sought to improve our electoral system not too long ago, and taking the process all over the world to our nationals to introduce voter, ID, et cetera. Meanwhile, the opposition was intentionally absent. And we reach to one important point in good governance, the selection of a leader. Our party has always maintained a democratic process in how we select a leader, and it is guided by our constitution. And every year, for the past eighty-two years, we have a party conference in which someone puts themselves up for the position of leadership of the party. And you and others, delegates from around the country, come together and you vote and you decide if you want this person to be your leader. So anyone who feels that they are capable of leading the Saint Kitts and Nevis Labour Party has that opportunity every single year. If you feel that the present leader is not doing a good job, if you feel that the time has come for the leader to move on, there is a process through which our party allows that to happen. I will give you an example. In our neighbouring country of Antigua, where Gaston Brown, who is now the new Prime Minister of Antigua and Barbuda, challenged some time back, I think in 2006, the leadership of the Labour Party. He failed, but he tried again in 2012, and he succeeded. He used the process that was there in order to unseat the present, the past leader, and become himself the leader. And that is the democratic process that we are talking about. I understand that a similar situation happened in St Lucia, where the present opposition party had a change of leadership by challenging the leader at that party's conference. So, we look at the situation that we have here, and I must say very clearly that if at any time myself, Dr Drew, Marcella, Honourable Martin, any one of you feel that there is time for a new leader, a different leader, you have and we have an opportunity to do so, and we will never be afraid to exercise that. But after nineteen years of sterling stewardship, we see no reason to do that right now. So we do not buy an argument that there is no chance of it happening, because if you are on the side of the people, the people will be on your side. So let us look at the subversion of this process in the option that we have in the upcoming election. After we had some defection of two senior members of the Saint Kitts and Nevis Labour Party, a party was formed called PLOP, or it's PLP, and out of thin air, a leader was formed. No constitution, no conference, no one voting, just a leader was formed. Tell me, how democratic is that process? How does that exude any semblance of good governance? Let us move forward into what is the main opposition of the Saint Kitts and Nevis Labour Party. Unity, or as some are now seeing and we realise, disunity. Again, out of thin air, in a twinkle of an eye, plopp, there was a leader. No conference, no constitution, no voting. Please explain to me, how is that an example of good democratic practices and good governance? And so, I think the choice is clear as to see who of the choices that we have are indeed practising good governance or good democratic processes. We believe wholeheartedly in upholding the constitution, whether it be our party constitution or whether it be our federal constitution. So let us move on in terms of good governance. When we speak of good governance, we must speak to the issue of collective responsibility. And I want to refer to the constitution as it pertains to collective responsibility. In section fifty-three and subsection three, it says, "The functions of the cabinet shall be to advise the Governor General in the Government of St Christopher and Nevis, and the Cabinet shall be collectively responsible to the National Assembly for any advice given to the Governor General by or under the general authority of the Cabinet, and for all things done by or under the authority of any minister, any minister in the execution of his office." What that means is... What that means is that when you join a cabinet, you have by our constitution a collective responsibility to agree with the decisions that the Cabinet makes. If however, you feel that the decision is not in the best interest of the country, is not in the best interest of the people, then you are free to remove yourself from that Cabinet. You're not allowed under our constitution to be in Cabinet, have a majority decision made and go into National Parliament and refute or argue against that decision. That is a breach of our constitution. And there are some who are guilty of that but claim that they are the ones who are truly upholding our constitution. So if you had disagreements with any decision that was made, it is clear, no one is forcing you to remain in that situation. You do what is required and you resign. You go to the people and you tell them that these things are not right. But you can't in Parliament argue against a decision made in Cabinet and then show up for Cabinet Monday morning. It is a blatant disrespect of the constitution. And so we believe that that is not a good example of good governance but something that will always be adhered to by this party. In fact, I cannot recall an instant where the Prime Minister and others dared to speak ill of anyone while they were in the Cabinet. And they have practised that and maintained that. Additionally, when it refers to the Cabinet, there is a particular thing that happens before you join Cabinet. You take what is called an oath of secrecy. And I'm going to read for you the oath that everyone who joins Cabinet must take. It is Schedule Four, Part Three, for those who would like to refer to it later. And the oath reads, "I," and maybe I can use this time to practise, "I do swear or solemnly affirm that I will, not on any account, at any time whatsoever, disclose any counsel, advice, opinion or vote given by any minister as a member of the Cabinet and that I will not accept with the authority of the Cabinet and to such extent as may be required for the proper conduct of the government of St Christopher and Nevis, directly or indirectly reveal the business or proceedings of the Cabinet or any matter coming to my knowledge as a member of the Cabinet." That is the oath of office or oath of secrecy when you enter Cabinet according to our constitution. And there have been blatant examples now of where persons who were a part of Cabinet have reached this. On the radio saying the whole Cabinet documents and referring to things that happened in the Cabinet and yet pretend, put up a facade to try and fool me as a young man and others that they are the ones who are going to uphold the principles of good governance. I am not sold. We have seen a blatant breach of these two examples. Let us look further a little bit in terms of what else we need to look at with respect to good governance. When we are talking about good governance, we must, in our constitutional reform, look across the floor legislation. I think it is Antigua and Trinidad that have some examples that we can lean on. But the principle is very straightforward. I think that it is unfair that I, Congress Maynard, will come to you as the Labour candidate for constituency number three in January or February or March of 2015 and say to you, "Vote for me as the Labour candidate for number three." And in April of that same year, the Prime Minister watched me bad. And I say, "You know what? I'm going to bring down the government." And I take it upon my own whim and fancy and decide to cross the floor to bring a duly elected government to its knees. That cannot be right. And that cannot be an example of good governance. And so it is imperative that any reform of our constitution must look cleanly and clearly at crossing the floor legislation. For good governance, one of the main issues that we have heard is the motion of no confidence. Whereas in this hall and in this country at large, I believe that we have a motion of full confidence. The motion of no confidence before us is one of deception. It was just an excuse for some persons to defect for whatever it is, whether thirty, forty or fifty pieces of silver. And one of the main cornerstone elements of the motion of no confidence, which the defectors supported, was the Land for Debt initiative by the government. They rallied and reeled against it in Parliament, in public. When it was time to vote on it, they were conveniently absent. They were, correct? They were conveniently absent to vote on the matter. But they debated, but they were absent to vote on the matter. By the way, a vote that would have disallowed such legislation to pass. It is very important for the nation to understand that everyone who opposed the vote, or sorry, the Land for Debt deal, had an opportunity to stop it. They had an opportunity to vote against it. And at that time, had everyone who opposed it, voted against it, it would have yielded a seven-seven result. And you cannot pass anything without a majority. And further, we know that they would have supported it in the Cabinet. But because they needed something to go on to make the motion of no confidence seem to have any credence, they decided to reel against it. And then, months after, the same persons from our sister isle who claimed to vehemently oppose the Land for Debt swap and said very clearly and I think laid out in specific terms other options apart from the Land for Debt deal. They went behind closed doors and signed off on a resolution in order to effect the very same Land for Debt deal. They claimed that we did not consult anyone. But we went, as the St Kitz Nevis Labour Party government, to the highest form of consultation, which is our National Parliament. And we debated it. We put it out there for them to vote against it. However, in our sister isle in Nevis, as far as I know, they have not yet brought something like that to the Parliament. And if you're so against it, just bring it to the Parliament and vote against it. It was never in place in the first place. It is misleading to tell the public that it was all but done. That is totally untrue because there were many opportunities in which you could have chosen to do something totally different. So what we see here is a deceptive move on the motion of no confidence with the Land for Debt deal. Further, even now, apart from even just adopting what was there, we see that the NIA is now going further. They're doing more land. And we understand that they're even going faster than us now in terms of selling the land. And so what we see here is a deception. And I do not believe that a motion of no confidence tool should be abused in this way for your own personal gain. When it comes to the motion of no confidence, I agree that we should have a debate about, sorry, timeframes with respect to the motion of no confidence. However, that is something that must be in our discussion of constitutional reform. The motion of no confidence should never be a tool that can be abused. It should never be a case that because of personal disfavour or favour, I can get up in the morning and decide to bring the life of a government to an end. When one speaks of good governance, we must look at uneven boundaries. We must deal with the age-old democratic principle of one man, one vote. Right now, you have a constituency that is two and three times larger than another constituency. It then means that someone who votes in a smaller constituency has more voting power than someone who votes in a larger constituency, thereby making my vote unequal to someone else in another constituency. It has been the single most observed thing that we need to correct by our observers for elections, that we must address the situation of uneven boundaries. Yet, the opposition continues to do everything, everything to stop a process of good governance, which is making sure our boundaries are equal. For good governance, we must look at freedom of speech and the recent attempts to subdue and suppress freedom of speech. Freedom is now a post office, full of letters. Freedom FM, now a post office, full of letters. And I understand that recently, Win FM also got a letter. That's a shocker for me. Win FM has gotten a letter. I need to get some more details on that. I was just given that information. And maybe I need to prepare myself for a letter for what I am about to say. Something that really touched me recently is, I have joined this political debate and this political team to see what difference I can make, to see what I can do for my constituency, to see what I can do faithfully for my community. And I believe that it is incumbent upon us as politicians and as representatives to be honest persons when dealing with public affairs. And so, let me say this very clearly. If there is any truth whatsoever to what I am hearing about millions of dollars for government lands in Nevis being paid to a company owned by a premier and his wife for the sale of government land. If this is true, and I hope it is not, there must be some sort of accountability here. Because I could only imagine, I can only imagine if that had happened across the water here in St Kitz. I could only imagine if this alleged story happened across these waters. And so for my own growth in my political career, for someone who has served Nevis for that long, I am hoping that this is not true. I am hoping that they did not do this. And I will leave my naivety at that for now. Because this is certainly not an example of good governance. And we must see it, if true, for the hypocrisy that it represents and the hypocrisy that we must fight in this election, where one thing is good for me, but not good for you. I can tell you today that I love you and tomorrow I hate you. I can tell you for twenty-five years that this is the way to go and wake up in the next morning and say it is the wrong way to go. One of the other things before I conclude, because this is not my night, is the abuse of the court system when it comes to good governance. We see, and it has always been the case, when the people are not on your side, the first place you run to is the court. And the opposition finds themselves in this predicament always. We've seen it with the motion of no confidence, to put that process in the court. We see it with the boundaries case. And we even see it in my little constituency with the Valmaris property, where a gentleman sought to use the court and mislead the court to believe that he was the sole proprietor of a property that he was not. He tried to mislead the court that he occupied and owned the building for twenty-five years, which he did not. He sought to mislead the court that he never informed his constituents of his new constituency office after he had a grand opening. He sought to mislead the court that any additions or any monies whatsoever at all to do with the improvement of the constituency office, he paid it out of his pocket. Well, I didn't know his pocket was so deep. Because I certainly can't do that. And so what we see here is an abuse of the court system in order to advance your own political gain. And that is not an example of good governance. And so I leave it here tonight, that we in springtime and we in the St Kitz Nevis Labour Party are committed to addressing the concerns as it relates to good governance. But we will do it as we have always done, through the proper processes and through sound and thoughtful constitutional reform. We are the slate of all eight that will lead and continue to lead this country forward. And I am proud to be a part of it. Thank you. God bless and God bless the people of St Kitz and Nevis.
Your future representative for constituency number three, Congress Maynard. I think he did a very able job. Well researched, well thought out. And we thank him for his contribution this evening. I'm reminding those people who are listening online that there are several ways to participate in this evening's proceedings. You can send us your text messages to 7631719. You can also send us an email this evening at talkforprogress@gmail.com. You can view what is happening here if you're unable to make it at sklaborparty.com. I have already begun to get some messages in from our sisters in Nevis and brothers in Nevis. They are listening. Oh, it's a sister isle, it's a sister isle. They're tuned in right now and we appreciate that they want to be a part of what is happening here with the St Kitz Nevis Labour Party. We always have our doors open and we are always willing to welcome all comers in any Labour movement. We're going to move on now this evening and speak with the lady of the moment. We are in her constituency now, Central Bastea, constituency number two, Honourable Marcela Leibert. We're going to invite her to make her presentation this evening.
A very pleasant good evening to everyone. Permit me to recognise our Prime Minister, the right Honourable Dr Denzel Douglas, other members of the head table, Mr Congress Maynard and Mr Scott Keynes and our moderator for the evening, Lady Moderator, Deputy Prime Minister Ollie Martin, our springtime crew, Dr Terrence Jew and Dr Gilbert, Donal Glenn-Goss-Philip, former Minister, Mr Cedric Leibert, Ambassador Walford Gomes, I think I saw Ambassador Roslyn Hazel somewhere in the crowd. Ambassador Walford Gomes, I think I saw Ambassador Roslyn Hazel somewhere in the crowd. I also want to say a very special good evening to all the good people of Central Bastille who are here tonight and those who are listening on the radio or via the internet or viewing via the streaming that's happening, all the other good comrades from the various constituencies, the media. Tonight, my task is rather simple. I will be, I'll be going strictly local and looking only at Central Bastille for a change. Tonight, we'll be strictly local. I want to start off with some condolences to the families of Anita Lyberg-Duggins, who was late to rest yesterday, Viada Decosta-Claxton in Canada. I understand that funeral is tomorrow. Viada originated from the Ward family, you know, an original Dorset family, Pearl Payne and Sylvia Ward and the others and the Decostas. The family of Desiree Hilega, her mom, you should know, her mom Dolores, who is a strong comrade, Mr Riley of Soho, who passed recently. And then we have a couple of persons who are on our sick list. We pray for all of them, but particularly Ingrid Richards in the United States, Kathleen Thomas, who we understand had to go back to the United States for treatment, Joseph Dongary Hanley, who is in the hospital, and Porter, who is out but recovering, and Viola Harvey of Upper Market Street, among others. Also want to say congratulations to all of the graduates right now of the Irish Town Primary School. They had that graduation ceremony yesterday and I want to commend the headmistress, Mrs Body, and all the teachers for the hard work that they put in to have that graduation ceremony yesterday in such good style. I also want to commend Miss Emilita Paul, who is here in the room, on her graduation today. Sorry I couldn't make it. Bee Chalene School. And to all of her graduates throughout the whole federation. This is graduation season. We've been to several of them, lots of us. Incidentally, it's funny how it comes full circle because I was born in Nevis Street, which is right out here, right on the plot of land that my good buddy Oswald lives. Right there. And so, we're right here, almost in my birthplace, and tomorrow is my birthday. So, it all comes into place. I just want to say that when I was first elected to office in 2010, we had what I believe was the most powerful message of the campaign. Stronger families, safer communities. Everybody took up that message in the churches, on the political platforms. I said there's some people who won't come to take families from us, but we remain the party who are looking out and trying to make stronger families and safer communities. Central Bastille is an area where you have several communities. And so, what we have sought to do over the time period is to make the families stronger and the communities safer. I just want to say that this is not just about, and what our task and program and plans were, it didn't have to do just with physical structures, although those are very important. Housing, roads, et cetera, and physical buildings are extremely important. But what is equally important for us was the development of the people of Central Bastille in terms of their personal growth, in terms of inculcating family values in our young people, respect for themselves, respect for others, respect for God, gratitude, being your brother's keeper, the benefits of volunteerism, which seem to be slowly dying because we wanted to build back community spirit. And you couldn't build community spirit without building volunteerism because there is where it really came from. And so, we had the task of doing that. And if I could say so myself, I thought we did a pretty good job of it. And so, I just want to show you, you can see from the slide, some of the projects which we have undertaken over that period of time and where we are and where we are going. And so, stronger families, safer communities is timeless. A lot of the plans and programs that we had originated from the people themselves because we listened. And so, we had the refurbishing of the bath. Could you take off the light on the stage? Thank you. We had the refurbishing of the bath at Pickleberry Alley that came out of the community. They wanted it done, and so it was done. And so, you have a refurbished bath, I think it's called Refresh, right now. And I want to commend Sean Bingley-Lyberg for keeping that bath clean for well on two years now. That's a community bath. It's not his personal bath, but he keeps it clean, comes back to the spirit of volunteerism. And then, we in strengthening our communities, we keep a family fundy. And this family fundy came about even before I was elected to office because we had our sixth year this year in the family fundy for the entire family. This is one of the programs that we decided to put in place annually in order to bring the community closer together. And I want to say that it is, doing that job is only a few weeks ago, a young man from the MacNait area said to me that he looks forward every year to the family fundy when they can play their basketball and sports in a fun way and bring the community together. Also, we reconstructed a bridge between Shadwell and Greenland's. It was broken down and it affected the people who, especially out of the children, who make that walk and that trek to school every day. That bridge has now been redone and it is a very good sight to see, more positive and stronger for the people and the children who make that trek between Fry Village and Greenland's, especially when they go into school and even the village area where they cross over into Shadwell. That bridge has been reconstructed. As part of the week of activities that we keep every year from the time I've been elected, we organize a primary school competition to help to build the young children in the area. Netball, you know, is a favorite sport of mine. And so, we have the primary school competition between Irish Town Primary, Bee Chalene, Tucker Clark, William Connor, and of late, we had Dean Glasford as well taking part in that competition. So, we find a way to incorporate all of the young girls and to keep them focused and to find positive things for them to do. Every year, we do that. Then there was, there's the renovation of Dorset Park. And this is a big one. Because Dorset Park, apart from the fact that that is where I grew up, Dorset Park represents an entire community. It represents the community of Dorset, Soho, Market Street, College Street, Nevis Street and all, Greenland's and the surrounding areas because Dorset Park has a basketball court. And as you know, there are about four or five basketball teams. That is their home. That's where they practice cutbacks, hitters, and so on. They practice there on a regular basis. And so, those of you who haven't seen Dorset Park, the renovation, you need to go and see it. We now have a kids' zone there because we have a number of preschools around the area. And so, that would also satisfy those preschools and the benches and so on that are there now. The teachers and parents can sit while the children play in the kids' zone. We have all of the gates on and we're hoping to have an opening tentatively on the 26th of July. So, Dorset Park is one of the ways in which we're rebuilding that community. And I want at this point also to congratulate the Market Street Committee that was launched last year. They're doing a good job to help rebuild the spirit and Dorset Park means a lot to them and to rebuilding of the spirit. I want to thank Dr Garfield Alexander, James Barman Hanley and Miss Camilla Lawrence, in particular, the ones who are carrying the fight in that Market Street Committee. We also have the renovation of the Gardens Playing Field. This is also a big one. When I first went into office, what is now the refurbished tennis court was really a jungle. And so, at first, I set about to get people cleaning it up. And when it was cleaned up, we had Irish Town Primary beginning to play lawn tennis there, even as it was there in its bad state, the court. And so, we decided to resurface it. So, those of you who haven't seen it yet, there is a resurfaced tennis court there, brand new for the Irish Town Primary School and for the community. So, we expect to see more lawn tennis there. We also have added some stands, some little stands to the basketball court and to the netball court, which is soon to be resurfaced. We were able to replace the lights that were bad there with bright, sparkling new lights, thanks to Minister Philip. But we have, as a matter of fact, when football is being played down there, people will tell you that's the best sight now to go and play football because the gardens have been upgraded to such an extent. The repainting, the fencing. We even have a kiddies corner down there now as well to turn it into a family park as part of strengthening our families in Central Bastille. Then we had the renovation and repainting of the MacNait Community Centre. This is very special to me because we add a special emphasis there of accommodating persons living with disabilities. So, it is being refurbished and being refurbished with that in mind. So, we're doing whatever we can to help persons living with disabilities because I don't know if you saw our mission statement at the very beginning, but it said, "Developing Central Bastille, family by family, community by community, while embracing all and remain all." So, persons living with disabilities would be included. It's only recently they had a ceremony there because they too are learning the computer, the technology. No one must be left behind. We had the renovation and repainting of the public market. Public market is physically in Central Bastille. It was a little bit of an eyesore. And so, we're able to uplift and give a facelift to that part of the constituency with the repainting and the refinishing of the market. We said, "While embracing all." And so, we always include people from the Spanish community in whatever we do. We have helped them in terms of whenever they have their own independent celebrations in February and whenever we have our week of activities, we involve them in our activities as well. Then we had the naming of Brunda Avenue. That is a street that we found had no name, running between Law Fines Avenue and Law Tibbo Avenue. And so, when the streets in MacNait and even in Nevis Street and Seaton Street and Dorset, I think people forget how they looked when I went into office in 2010. They were in bad shape. And I was hounding the minister about their morning, noon and night. That's Minister Martin. So, to get me off his back one day, he said, "You know what? I'm going to pave all of the streets in MacNait." So, almost every avenue was paved in there. Shaw Avenue, Malone Avenue, Durant Avenue, Thompson Street, Burden Street. And then you had Nevis Street, Seaton Street, right next to the Methodist Church, Malone Avenue, Durant Avenue, Burden Street, College Street, Fines Avenue, Dorset, Shadwell. All of these areas were paved since I've become the minister and a member for constituency number two. Sometimes we forget this. As part of, again, our community strengthening, we provided assistance for some murals up at Upper Market Street. If you go up there, you would see some paintings on the wall, national flag, et cetera. And also, we provided assistance with the upkeep of the garden at the top of Upper Market Street. And I want to commend all those persons who volunteered to keep up there looking beautiful and keeping the aesthetics looking very, very good. In terms of the Pine Garden area, we organized a street football competition last year, which we upgraded this year to bring that community together. It was much better this year than last year and we hope to make it even better going forward. We also have started a park in that Pine Garden area. The equipment is down and we're now looking to fence it. And by the way, all of these activities that I've spoken about have brought out also job opportunities for people inside and outside the constituency, whether it's Dorset Park, the gardens. Right now, you have Irish Town Primary School that's under construction and we have people there with job opportunities, contractors, three contractors actually doing that job at the moment, the renovation of the Irish Town Primary School. We have the New Road Family Park that is currently under construction and well on its way. Right now, again, we have about two contractors there, one doing the retaining wall and the fencing and one finishing the walkways. And soon, we'll have somebody else doing the parking facility up there and the bathrooms. You'll have a family bathroom and another bathroom. And the lighting, which is already here, which was ordered, will be LED lighting. So, we will have green energy up at that Shadwell, New Road Family Park. Pine Gardens is also seeing some development in terms of the drainage and roads that were there. The community was there, part of it with improper drainage. The roads needed to be surfaced, paved. There were dirt roads. Right now, that project is well on its way. Again, I want to thank Minister Martin for all of his assistance in this regard. The people of Pine Gardens are now getting their roads and their drainage done. Irish Town Primary School, I said already, that's currently under construction. Again, strengthen that community and helping to assist our children and our teachers to operate in a more comfortable environment for learning. Health, fitness and wellbeing. We started some cleanups throughout the entire constituency and we are about to start another phase shortly, maybe by next week. We have already cleaned, we had cleaned Upper Market Street, Lower Market Street, Malone Avenue, Upper and Lower Pickleberry Alley, Delilah Gardens, Upper Shaw Avenue, Fry Village, Durant Avenue, Fort Thomas Road. These are just some of the areas where we have organized cleaning already and we're hoping to do some more cleaning. I want, however, to appeal to persons living in the area and persons who don't live in the area. Please, do not throw your garbage on the empty lots that are around. This is a problem that we suffer from in Central, I believe, in other areas. And I think that the people who live in those areas should also be more vigilant and try to object to people coming and throwing their garbage on empty lots close to your homes. We go and we clean them up and then two weeks later, they pile up with garbage again. And that is unnecessary really because if it's one proper system we have in terms of collection, it's our garbage collection. People know what day it's coming around. It's very regular. So, let's see if we could work with that and try to keep our communities clean. We, during our week of activities, we continue to have health talks about non-communicable diseases to help poor people and about proper eating and exercise. And I want to also advertise that at the New Road Family Park, there's an outdoor gym. So, you can go there and exercise to help promote healthy lifestyles. It's an outdoor gym. You don't have to pay. It will be free. You can go and exercise. So, while your children are, you know, using the equipment and enjoying themselves, you just make sure you're doing your exercise or you could take a jog around the park. So, all of this is extremely important to the development of all people. I just want to say on the health as well that we had a luncheon some months ago. I'm mentioning it because we did this. The proceeds went to our comrade Ingrid Richards, who is getting medical attention in the United States of America. And so, we want to again let Ingrid know that we are praying for her. Investment in our young people. The camp. This year, August 18th to 22nd, we will have our seventh camp at the MacNait Community Centre. You would notice that this camp has been going on even before I was elected to office and we've kept up that camp every year. This year, the theme is "Going Green with Love." Going Green with Love. We want to teach our children about green energy and to let them understand the importance of that. We use this camp to inculcate family values to our children. We have religious minis- We have religious ministers come in every day to speak to them, and other people speak to them about different issues, health, budgeting, et cetera. Last year, for the first time, we, usually it's from ages five to 12. Last year, for the first time, we went from 13 to 18. And we introduced things like haircutting for the males and cosmetology. Well, last year we did nail painting for the females. This year, we also will extend it to that age range, and we are adding cosmetology, and we are adding picture framing to it this year. Also, we're gonna have Ms. Dale Isaac coming to do some pottery. And I want to thank Dale for offering to come into the pottery this year for the camp. The forms are already out there. You can get your forms from the constituency office or from Massie's house. You can check Stabby, it's a Sydney Bridge water, for your forms. It's $10 for ages five to 12, and $20 from 13 to 18. It's one week of activities. And every year, last year we had about 175 participants. And I know that this year we would not have anything less than that. In terms of investing in our youth, we've also sponsored quite a number of the sporting teams in the constituency. We have sponsored Got Box Basketball Team. We have made contributions to hitters, to Quakers and to McKnight Trotters. We've also provided scholarships to children out of Irish Town Primary School, both for academics and people who are in need, and also promoting those in sports. We've done the same thing for Beechallin Primary. The people in Central Bashtier, or in Beechallin Primary, they can compete for the annual scholarships that we give as we invest in our young people academically and for sports. We've been doing this for the past three years. And we've also provided hundreds of job opportunities for young people in Central Bashtier. I just want to let you know that in PEP alone, in PEP alone, there are over 500 people from Central Bashtier involved in the PEP. Over 500 people in Central Bashtier alone involved in the PEP. And I just want, for the record, because a lot have been said about the PEP out there, to speak to some of the things they're involved in. Farming, nursing attendants. And it was interesting because I attended the graduation ceremony for the nursing attendants. And it's for the first time we had males being nursing attendants, and one was from Central Bashtier, one of the males. We have people working at the labs at JNF, they're admin at the JNF. We have them working in the radiology department, in pharmacy. Some are teaching aides, assisting in the schools, some are security, cosmetology, catering, hospitality, women in construction, daycare workers. And if you watch the Chilmond March, you'd have seen the whole section of the PEP workers in the march dealing with daycare. Those were training in daycare, landscaping, culture. We have some of our PEP people in music, working in the Ministry of Culture. Many of them in government offices, in private businesses all over. And I think we need to underscore the fact that private businesses are benefiting from the PEP because the payment is not coming out of their own pockets, but their business is benefiting from it. And we hope that they're doing what is necessary to train these people with the intention of taking them on soon. I went to the opening of Chester's Chicken recently, and there were a number of PEP workers there. And he did commit to taking them on full time. And I want to congratulate Mr. White for that initiative and for his commitment to take them on full time in his business. Then we have some in tourism, in sports, in mechanics, as special constables, some in furniture repair and furniture making, in home care. We just had another six-week training session for our own home care officers. And about three or four PEP workers were among them. And guess what? A PEP worker topped the class. For the home care officers. And so you would see that, and this is just 20 of the various areas that PEP workers are involved in. But I want to especially acknowledge the people who are in landscaping, especially those young men in Central Bashtier. I want them to know that they're doing a wonderful job, keeping the constituency clean. I believe they're doing it in other areas as well, but I have to big up those in Central Bashtier in the terms of the landscaping. Investing in our youth. I want to acknowledge Garden Hotspurs and what they're doing for the community. When they were the under-19 champions, we encouraged them by having a function for them and giving some awards. We also have been providing our young people with opportunities under the SAFE programme. Many young men and women have benefited in Central Bashtier under that programme. And I want to say, those of you who are on the waiting list, you'll soon get your turn. We sponsor about 20 children every year from Irish Town Primary School to take part in the National Carnival, as part of the promotion of that Carnival. And I also sought to, I actually begged for some instruments, for musical instruments, music instruments. And I got in touch with a gentleman overseas who started trying to get some instruments for me. We got some, some arrived. I just got an email from him today saying that he's getting some more. But those that have arrived already, we will start music lessons this summer. Listen shortly, the forms are already out there, you can get them at the constituency office for children ages eight to 18. It is our intention to form Central Orchestra. And so we are starting with music lessons this summer for the children in that area. In terms of Garden Hotspurs, I really want to commend Elvis Pepe Isaac, Colbert Brown and Jermaine Gomes. Again, the spirit of volunteerism, these people do this thing without one cent pay. I see Ras Dabo here, he did a good job while he was there as well. London Housing. We have provided housing for over 50 families since 2010. Another 10 persons have qualified under the former Sugar Workers Scheme. And currently, we have launched 62 units up at Pine Gardens Horizons. These 62 units comprises of townhouses and duplexes. Three of the townhouses and three of the duplexes would begin, are scheduled to begin within a week's time, one week from today. I think the ground has already been cleared for one of them to start. I just want to let the people of Central Bashtier know, those of you who are interested, please go to the NHC and fill out your application form. Some people have done that already, some people have already been interviewed. It is my understanding that within two to three weeks of your application, you should be called for an interview. So if you have already applied, two to three weeks have passed and you've not been interviewed, kindly go back to NHC or call them so that you can get an interview as we set about to do 62 units at New Horizons. This New Horizons area housing where the townhouses would be. In terms of land, about 200 persons in Central Bashtier have already been issued land since 2010, about 200. And we expect to have some more land issued to those who are currently on the waiting list. So in terms of housing and land, we are fulfilling, or trying our best to fulfil the needs of the people, because we know that housing, there's a crying need for housing, that need would never end. Finally, I want to look at promoting families, because that is one of our biggest things in Central Bashtier. We organise events for the elderly every October during the month of the elderly. Because we must look after all of our people, including our elderly. We cannot leave them out, without them, we would not have been here. And so we always recognise our elderly. Every Christmas as well, we take baskets out to our elderly. Our fathers, recognise our fathers every Father's Day. And we have a Father's Day brunch and we take them to church. My little bias here, so we go to the Wesleyan Holiness Church every year with our fathers. Recognise our mothers. Every Mother's Day, we show appreciation to our mothers in Central Bashtier. And this year we had an extra special treat where we had the movie Single Moms Club shown for our young single moms of Central Bashtier. At the Caribbean Cinemas. We provided a ramp for a lady who had lost her leg in the area because she's still very mobile, and she still does a lot of her household work and family work. But because of her housework, she couldn't move around with her chair without the ramp. And so we were very happy to provide that ramp for her, to help her, to provide for her family and to be part of her family activities. We've provided an opportunity for women in Central Bashtier under the WISE programme, women in small enterprises. As you know, women, where women are, the children are, by and large. And so, we were able to provide 54 women with assistance under the WISE programme to help them in Central Bashtier. And finally, we recently visited private nurseries, private nurseries, private preschools and private decors in Central Bashtier as part of the 30th anniversary of Chilmond recently, and made a contribution to all of them towards the Chilmond March. I just want to commend all of our teachers at these schools because it's not an easy task for them, and it's not a money-making scheme either. So it's a very difficult task to help out our parents and help out our families and help out our communities, and we should acknowledge and commend them. So for us in Central Bashtier, we are now showing love through service. This is a natural extension of stronger families, safer communities. It is love through service. We strongly believe that you cannot serve people unless you really love them. You have to love people to serve them. And so, we have shown all of in Central Bashtier in many ways, through service to our people in all of the areas I mentioned. And I want to say thank you to the people of Central Bashtier for your continued support and to let you know that together we will continue to build Central Bashtier, family by family and community by community. Thank you.
And we'd like to thank the Honourable Marcela Lybberd. Clearly you have elected a representative who is willing to work and to work for you and to produce results. And moving into our next election, we know who certainly you're going to reelect as your representative. Well, and your constituency are very anxious as well.
Sorry, but how could I forget to thank Delroy? Please put your hands together for Delroy. Delroy did a wonderful job along with Ms. Rattan in helping to produce what you have seen on this screen here today. Thank you, Delroy.
And I also would like to do something for you before we move on this evening, to show the appreciation for you and wish you all the best for your birthday tomorrow.
And also the Right Honourable Prime Minister. Permit me to adopt the protocol, already established. But at this time, I just want to ask especially the people from Central Bashtier to stand while we sing "Happy Birthday" to our wonderful, wonderful... It's tomorrow, but we won't see her tomorrow, I'm sure she'll be busy. Let's stand, please, and all sing "Happy Birthday." Let's go. After three, one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Marcela. Happy birthday to you. A lady never tells her age. She's gorgeous, she looks wonderful, and certainly she's vigorous, and will continue to do her best for you, and it's good to know that you appreciate what she's doing. Thank you so much for that, Central Bashtier. And now, the moment we have all been waiting for, one of them this evening. Our Honourable Prime Minister, Right Honourable Dr. Denzel Douglas is going to address us now.
And I think it's really very important for us. Mr. Maynard has said this, and it shows that the people continue to support him, which is why he's there. The party supports him, which is why after 19 years of going to convention, he remains the leader of this party. He's able, he's able rather, he's very competent and capable. And he's put together a great team of people. It is youth, it is experience. And certainly he's one of the few prime ministers in the region that shows that he's thinking about the future and moving forward and securing the integrity of not only the country Saint Kitz and Nevis, but the longevity of the oldest institution, political institution in the Caribbean, the Saint Kitz Nevis Labour Party. Our Prime Minister, Right Honourable Dr. Denzel Douglas.
I want to thank our Madame Malavita for her kind words of introduction. And also to recognise from the outset, our Deputy Prime Minister, the Honourable Dr. Earl Lassie Martin, and the distinguished persons at the head table who have been presenting to you over the last few minutes. Honourable Marcela Lybberd, Mr. Convis Maynard, of course Mrs. Scott Keynes, and also my colleagues in the cabinet, colleagues in the cabinet and in the party leadership who are sitting in the audience. And ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I would now want to say a few words about our Citizenship by Investment Programme and the SIDF, that is the Sugar Industry Diversification Foundation. I know that Mr. Keynes spoke about the Citizenship by Investment Programme from the perspective of one who is engaged in the programme as a service provider, as he said, and also as a developer of real estate property that is made available to the programme. What I want to do is to quickly look at it from the government's perspective. And then, of course, include in that presentation something specific about the SIDF, which is an option within the Citizenship by Investment Programme. I want to begin by taking us back to 1984, when the programme was first established by the PM administration. And there, it was specifically designed to benefit financially only those who owned real estate that they wanted to sell to foreign citizens. And also, it was designed to benefit one private lawyer who was of great influence within the then-government led by Dr. Kennedy Simmons. In fact, I emphasise tonight that there was no citizenship investment unit. There was no processing unit, as we have established today. There was only a private law office which handled all of the processing of applications. They were not held in any government office. In fact, when we took office back in 1995, we did not find any files in the government offices. And we could not get into the private office of that private law firm. And so we were basically at a loss, except what the Treasury held, which were those who had invested in bonds for 10 years. I think it is important to emphasise that because we wanted to look at where we were then and where we are today. Now, that particular state of affairs... Now, that particular state of affairs was always of great concern to us when we were in opposition. And so once we took office in 1995, we began to restructure the Citizenship by Investment Program to ensure firstly that all lawyers, not just one, all lawyers in Saint Kitts and Nevis who wanted to participate in the program would participate. Secondly, we wanted to make sure that all financial service providers, accountants, etc., would also be part of the group of persons processing applications for citizenship. We abandoned in particular the investment in bonds because we were being advised then that this was one of the vehicles through which money laundering was taking place in our country. And remember that we had attracted the distinction, the description of Devil's Island during that period of time. So we had to change that. We also made sure that our new citizens who will be invited to invest in our country and being given citizenship, that they were not only asked to invest in real estate, but we created back in 2006, the new option of investing in the Sugar Industry Diversification Foundation, which we did because we wanted to make sure that as we transitioned out of sugar on the close of the sugar industry in 2005, we would have had capital, enough money to do a number of things, provide new opportunities for training for our people, to fund new projects, to ensure that we would develop and finance interests in businesses. We would also have the opportunity to finance individuals and government agencies all throughout the entire Federation of Saint Kitts and Nevis. You would have heard that in September the 15th, 2011, we again revisited the program after first revisiting it just after taking office in 1995. And we revisited the Citizenship Act by amending a number of regulations to emphasise yet again that this was an investment program. This was not any program of selling passports. This was a program of investment. And after successfully investing and doing the new, the due diligence checks and persons were found to be clean, then we invited them to become citizens. Citizenship was not automatic. You invested, you were proven to be clean and then you were invited to become a citizen of Saint Kitts and Nevis. We also during 2011 revisiting and amending the regulations increased the investment amount. We realised that the value of property had increased dramatically. And so we moved from 200,000 US dollars for investment to where it is today, which is now 400,000 US dollars. We increased as well the amount that you would invest in the SIDF and we also increased the fees which the government was charging for processing the applications of those who wanted to invest in our country through the Citizenship by Investment Program. We also wanted to make sure in 2011 that we would make the program much more robust. We wanted to preserve the integrity of the program so that it would not just be another program involving immigration and investment like what we have in Canada, United States of America, in England, in several countries in Europe and in Asia. We wanted it to be the top program around the world and we were succeeding in doing that. You would have heard that in 2013, it became necessary for us to issue a ban on Iranians because by then we had heard that Iranians could be getting into the program in order to assist them in doing things which were considered illegal in our country. And so we issued a ban on any person applying to the program who was living in Iran. Because of course by then sanctions were being imposed by the United Nations, by the European Union, by United States of America on Iranian money coming out of Iran. They no longer allowed trading to take place normally with Iran. And therefore, if a person in Iran was applying for citizenship, naturally the money would have to come out of the Iranian banks in Iran and we were not allowed to do business with them in that regard. We were then informed later on after 2011 that Iranians were finding a way of getting around our ban. And so we issued in July of 2013, another advisory saying Iranians, no matter where you were born, sorry, no matter where you were living, once you were born in Iran, you could not enter our program. And this was pursued very, very vigorously. And then you would have heard that in May of this year, the United States Treasury Department issued what is called an advisory, warning bankers that some holders of Saint Kitts and Nevis passports who were doing business, business transactions with them in their banks, that they should be more careful in knowing exactly who they are because they believed that they were using our citizenship to become involved in illicit activities. And we have moved since then with great dispatch in response to that advisory issued in May of this year. By the next day, we brought all of the bankers together. I said to them in a meeting with my financial secretary, tell me what are some of the challenges that you face with persons who come to your banks holding our passports as economic citizens? And tell me what you think the government can do to assist you in carrying out what the advisory has asked you to do. That is, you must know exactly who these persons are who are doing business with you. And we were told that these persons by and large would not disclose where they were born. And that was important because according to the advisory, you must know who the person is standing in front of you doing banking business. You must not only know that they are citizens of a country, that they have a lot of money, etc., but you must know for example where they were born. And so this is part and parcel of the new arrangement that is being put in place in order to ensure that we do a number of things to have the advisory lifted. So we consulted with the bankers, we have consulted with the service providers, we have consulted with the developers of the real estate businesses, we have consulted with the due diligence companies who are doing our due diligence checks, we have consulted with our marketing and promotion agencies which are living abroad. And we have begun the process and we've consulted as well with the United States Treasury Department itself. And as a result, we've begun the process of ensuring that we do what is necessary to have the advisory lifted. In fact, on Monday of this week, after all of those consultations and discussions, the cabinet was finally able to roll out an action plan, also naming an implementation team and also identifying three heads of departments. Where we have reliable, efficient systems being run in the government to look at the system of operation within the CIU, make the necessary changes and improve the processing and improve on the efficiency generally within the CIU. I also would want to inform you that I took this matter to the heads of government meeting in the Caribbean community in Saturday on, in Antigua last week, last week, Monday, Wednesday, sorry, to Friday. And Caricom has recognised the importance of the program to our economic advancement in Saint Kitts and Nevis and to the economic advancement in other countries in the Caribbean who are engaged in this program. And in light of the success that we have had here in Saint Kitts and Nevis, we wanted to make sure that we collaborate and cooperate with each other within the Caribbean to ensure that we can attain the highest of standards that will keep our program free of unnecessary conflict with others within the Caribbean region. So that's where we are on the Citizenship by Investment Program. I mentioned earlier that we introduced back in 2006, 2007 on the closure of the sugar industry, the Sugar Industry Diversification Foundation as another option of investment in the Citizenship by Investment Program. I want you to know the following about the SIDF. I wanted to recognise that expanding home ownership is extremely important to our government. And the SIDF has dramatically expanded home ownership in our Federation. I also wanted to note that increased entrepreneurship, starting up new businesses, expanding businesses is a leading priority for us here as a government, as a people and as a country. And I want to emphasise that the SIDF has provided and continues to provide training, funding and mentorship in support of politicians and divisions who are interested not so much in having jobs working for other people, but in owning their own businesses. So this SIDF is a good thing for all of us. I want to also make the observation that this government is set, completely set on ensuring that politicians and divisions advance socially and economically. I want you to note that the SIDF has provided low-cost funding to nationals who are aspiring to greater social and economic stability, to recent graduates attempting to better manage their student loans and who want to become homeowners at the same time. And also to nationals who have had difficulty securing funding from traditional financial institutions, they have been provided support from the SIDF as a means of assisting them in moving forward. This evening, we want to hear from you. We want to really hear from you. But I want to leave you with one important fact. And I want in the days and weeks ahead for you to ponder on what it means about who is and who is not deserving of your vote. Officials within the so-called construct concoction or operation, whatever it is called, have made it their mission to publicly, vocally and relentlessly condemn our land for debt swap, the Citizenship by Investment Program and the SIDF. This is their public stance. We in this government have become very concerned that if things were to change, all of this will come to an end. Everything will come crashing down and our people will be worse off. This is of grave concern to us as a government. This is not only their public stance, it is their policy, political stance. What you need to know is that at the same time, that these persons are so righteous in the condemnation of all of these good programs which are being copied around the Caribbean and around the world. Their highest ranking officials, their spokespersons, the very candidates who are part of their so-called concoction, their supporters, they have been and still are actively facilitating the acquisition of Saint Kitts and Nevis citizenship.
We also have been hearing about the sales of certain crown lands on Nevis to persons of Middle Eastern origins and the depositing of large sums of money into certain accounts, in particular banks on Nevis. Bearing in mind that the Federation was previously blacklisted because of nefarious financial activities on Nevis, I would like to ask you, Mr Prime Minister, one, how does the federal government plan to deal with the situation on Nevis concerning large sums of undeclared US dollars being moved through that jurisdiction? Keeping in mind, it is the federal or Federation which stands to suffer from any negative international fallout. Two, will the federal government investigate the sales of crown lands on Nevis and the allegation that the sales transactions were conducted by a company owned by a member of the NIA? And it also whose personal account the monies were deposited? In addition, Mr Prime Minister, I would like you to explain for me what jurisdiction does the federal government have when it comes to crown lands on the island of Nevis? when it comes to crown lands on the island of Nevis? And Mr. Prime Minister, I want to say to you that the ink is not dried. And I am calling on you, Mr. Prime Minister, to take actions as to what is happening over in Nevis. Because remember, when the US going to point their finger, they will not be pointing it in Nevis, they will be pointing it to this federal government. And, Mr. Prime Minister, you must be strong. You have the support in this federation and don't be afraid to take them where they're supposed to be. That is before the courts, the people court, the people's courts can come after. But I want to see them going to the high court where they could go to jail, Mr. Prime Minister. Thank you very much.
As I understand, um, the full import of the question, which has come in three parts. One, what is it that we know as a federal government about transactions taking place within the banking system here in St. Kitts and Nevis? Pertaining to the purported purchase of land in Nevis? What jurisdiction does the St. Kitts federal government have over land in Nevis? And thirdly, what is the federal government to do with regard to these matters that are now in the air and have been discussed? Firstly, I should say that in my capacity as the Prime Minister, I am aware that a large sum of money arrived in the federation from Iraq for the purpose of purchasing some lands in Nevis. Owned by the Nevis Island Administration. I am aware that the banking system in St. Kitts in particular refused to accept the money. And refused to lodge the money into the account that was supposed to be owned by a company whose ownership is jointly by a high official in the Nevis Island Administration and his wife. The banking system in St. Kitts, as I said, refused to accept the money. And the money was returned from its original, um, place. Its origin, I should say. Its place of origin. We have been further informed that what appears to be the very same money, but with an increased amount to it, over one point five million dollars, then appeared in the banking system again, this time in Nevis. And in fact, did enter into a personal account of persons who were deemed to be ordinary persons who may not have had good reason to have such large sums of money deposited in their account. I cannot say much more than that now because I understand the matter is under investigation by the bank. I understand that some action has been taken by the management of the bank with regard to the staff that might have been involved. And so there is very little that I can say at this time. The government of St. Kitts and Nevis has no jurisdiction over land in Nevis. All of the crown lands would have been transferred to the Nevis Island Administration when we obtained, attained, I should say, independence back in nineteen eighty-three. And the Nevis Island Administration was constructed. As to what the government is going to do, I am not yet certain. As I said, this matter is on the investigation. But I wish to inform the nation that today, I received an official document which is a petition delivered from the opposition leader in Nevis and the leader of the N R P. Calling upon the federal government to do something about investigating these matters. As I said, the matters seem to be on the investigation. I can say no more about it at this time. And so that's my answer. Thank you.
Hi, good evening all. My name is Tracy Mason. First of all, I would like to congratulate the, first of all, I would like to congratulate the government on the three new programs, Help, Fresh, and Grasp for recent graduates. Um, my question tonight is if the government have anything in mind for a program such as a skill set identification program? Uh, with these programs, the government encourages entrepreneurship for our young people. And I think it is very important, um, since, uh, Mr. Scott Keynes in his introduction mentioned tonight that, um, there is a thrust in the construction industry, um, and particularly the architectural aspect. He also said that, um, the government has to request services such as 3D rendering um, from overseas since we do not have those kind of skills here. I would like to inform Mr. Keynes that one of our projects, um, Beacon Heights, actually, located in constituency number three, that all the 3D renderings for that project were locally done. So I think a program such as the Skill Set Identification Program would be a good thing. So that if Mr. Keynes is requesting anyone who, um, if is requesting 3D rendering skills, he would know that there are locals here who does that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much. Madam Chairperson, this question is directly for Mr. Keynes. Mr. Keynes, be easy. Mr. Keynes, what I would like to know, over the last year, undoubtedly, we have seen a tremendous rebound in the economy. The regional leaders are talking about it. Our regional sisters and brothers are talking about it. They have sent people here to find out about it. The experts are talking about it. We are seeing the statistics, we are seeing the list, we have seen that St. Kitts has gone from lower positions to higher positions in terms of our economic status. The masons have jobs, the carpenters are working. The maids have jobs in the hotels. As a matter of fact, I find that sometimes if you spend two weeks and you don't visit a place, you go back and you don't recognize it. The change is so tremendous, it's so rapid and so dynamic. On the other hand, I find that businessmen in St. Kitts who are benefiting the most from the S I D F project and from the rebound in the economy, they are so silent. Why are they so silent? If I were a business person and I intend to be someday, you would have had to take me off the air. The Prime Minister would have had to pull me down. Somebody would have had to tell me to keep quiet because my business is doing well. But why aren't we hearing from the business persons in St. Kitts? We are the TDCs. We are not hearing the shouts. We are the Rams. We are, we are the hotels. We are not hearing the shouts. Is it because it's not filtering down to the businesses as we think? Or is it because it's a decision that you experts, business experts make to be quiet? I want to know.
Well, I think the answer to a question is, uh, very, 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 very simple for me. In that I indicated from the inception that I'm here representing, uh, myself as a service provider and as a developer. And I'm here talking about it because I'm involved in this sector. And, uh, I'm benefiting from the Citizenship by Investment Program. So I'm here saying it. I'm not speaking for anyone else.
So then, sir, I'm going to recommend, I'm going to suggest that when you have the next chamber meeting, you must tell them. You must spread the message. Don't be quiet about it. I'm glad to see you here publicly tonight, but you need to tell them that we want to hear. Because they are the ones who are benefiting most from it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I have something that just came in here via email. Let me defer to the gentleman at the microphone.
Uh, good evening, charming ladies. Good evening, handsome men. A special good evening to the panelists at the center table. Um, we have an organization called the St. Kitts Nevis Labor Party, which is eighty-two years old. And when we look around, we can see the progress that this organization has brought to the ordinary man and woman of this country. We have seen the sons and daughters of cane cutters, domestic servants, porters, cane readers, becoming doctors, becoming lawyers, becoming accountants, and becoming prime minister. And each one of them have returned and they have bonded with the people as a means of saying thank you. And a means of telling the organization which provided the opportunity for them to go abroad and study, thank you. They have come back, the Dr. Gilberts, the Dr. Norwegian Wilsons, the A C Martin's, the, um, Dr. Denzel Douglas. They have come back and they have associated themselves with the organization which made it possible for them to become what they are. And what do we have as an opposition today? We have materials which are taken from the political landfill. Worm-eaten, full of corruption, untrustworthy. People whose word you cannot take, um, with a grain of salt. In two thousand and seven, Dwyer Astefan and I went on the, on the radio. And we made a CD concerning the nineteen sixty-seven events, the tenth of June events. Two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, it was on the radio. Two thousand and nine, it was on the radio. Two thousand and thirteen, it was on the radio. And two thousand and fourteen, Dwyer Astefan is coming to say that nineteen sixty-seven did not occur. When Michael Pawell was kicked out of PAM. Michael Pawell went at Pond's pasture when he held his first meeting. And he said, Lord, what they wanted me to do, I couldn't do. What did they want Michael Pawell to do that he could not do? He said it of the village as well. Um, in, um, in nineteen ninety-two, Michael Pawell said at, um, Central Bastille, um, Central Fine's Avenue, that there was a tenth of June. There was a tenth of June. Two thousand and fourteen, Michael Pawell is saying tenth of June did not take place. In the twenty-ten general elections, um, Lindsay Fitzgerald Grant was caught on video selling our land. Selling our land to a total stranger. Dr. Denzel Douglas and his cabinet used those lands that Lindsay Grant was supposed to sell to a complete stranger in order to bring down the national debt. All of us in here have suffered, have benefited from the national debt. Um, we are ordinary people like us could talk about owning land and owning houses prior to nineteen ninety-five. Which one of us in here could, um, could say that, boy, um, I want a piece of land and get a piece of land prior to nineteen ninety-five? So this was a part of the national debt. And Lindsay, I'm sorry, and TDC and Horsford boast every year about huge profits being made because people like us who get a piece of land and build a house on it or get a house from the government went there and we furnished, we, um, those little houses from TDC and Horsford. And because of us, they made huge profits. Prior to nineteen ninety-five, where could we, people in this country, in this, um, um, building, talk about owning house and land and going abroad to study, um, to study doctor and all them kind of things there? Doctor, um, Dr. A C Martin went to Cuba to study because, um, um, this man Hector in Antigua gave him a due. Hector was sending people to, um, to Cuba and Dr. Martin got a button. And when Dr. Martin got his break, he came here and he told the government of the day which was PAM, I can, um, get scholarships from the Cuban government for people here in St. Kitts. I'm lucky for him that they did not raise their feet and kick him. Because they paid him no heed, no attention. And it was in nineteen ninety-five when the labor government came into power that people started going to Cuba to study free of cost. Where would all the children of cane?
Current students. You know, anything that can cut costs for us, especially now when, you know, tuition is going up, EFA is going up, nothing is going down and everything is going up. So, you know, we have to pay more. So if there's anything that the government has planned for us, any new initiative with you, any new initiatives with universities?
You'd like to know what's going on?
I'd like to know what's going on. And I'd like to make a suggestion as well.
Quickly.
Because a lot of us, you know, order clothes and things to go to school with. So if there can be some duty fee up to like a two hundred dollars, you know, we'd appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. A very quick response, anybody there to that young lady? Because we're running very short on time. We thank you for that contribution.
One of the things I can say is that especially those who have had student loans from the Development Bank of St. Kitts and Nevis. We have asked the management, well, the board, I should send me support that position. Board has asked the management to look at the loan structuring. In the sense that, um, to consider whether the students can pay the interest after completing their studies rather than having their parents pay the interest while they're still studying. And also whether the arrangement could be such that as the payments continue on a monthly basis on their return, they would be paying on both interest and principal at the same time. We are going to have also a position presented to us as to whether the interest rate could be reduced for the benefit of the students.
Thank you, Mr. Prime Minister.
I like the idea about, um, maybe providing some incentive by way of duties. We have, um, particular, um, struggle, challenge with that, I would say, because we've been told that, um, incentives which are not legislative, which are not legislation-based would be difficult to implement, but we can still look at it at the cabinet level and we'll give a response to that appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Prime Minister. If there's anyone else who would like to make a contribution, please limit yourself to asking a question because we have to close off at, um, eleven o'clock. to asking a question because we have to close off at 11 o'clock. So if you can limit yourself just to asking questions, I'd appreciate that so much.
Good night, my name is Millie St Joseph. And Millie St Joseph, and I want to congratulate everyone on the nineteen years of government and a special, special congratulation to Marcelo, my good customer. But as we're on the topic of student and getting all the benefits, I have a problem. My problem is that most of these students who get all the benefits, they're not registered. They're not registered nowhere. Their parents cannot get them registered, but their parents come for the scholarship and it's unfair. It's all well and good for them to educate, I don't have a problem with that, but they must register. That's my question to anyone answer.
Thank you very much.
That's a very, very important observation. It means that our workers at the constituency level need to work harder. We know who they are, the student population is not so large that we cannot target them. And we need to do the appropriate canvassing that would allow us to reach our student population and encourage them to register, to participate in the electoral exercise in St Kitts and Nevis.
Mr Prime Minister, this one, you'll have to answer this one because it's not only when they go, when they apply, it don't matter who they're voting for, when they apply for the scholarship, you all who have the people in position must make sure that they are registered. It's a constitutional rights, but you fight hard for us to vote. And if they, it don't matter who they're voting for, you are just picking these people because of the father, the mother, whoever, and go on, free. When I walk in the street, they see my parents, "She, Labour Millie?" "Oh, Milla K, Milla Unity." And they send that and tell them, "No, unfair, and I registered and I voted?" "Hell no."
All right, thanks for that. I'm not sure anybody can compel a person to register to vote because as you said, it is a right, it's not an obligation. I understand what you're saying, but we're going to talk about this, but not tonight. Sir, if you have something you'd like to contribute quickly, because I see you on your feed, we'd like to hear from you very quickly.
I'm going to be very quick.
Yes, please, please.
Firstly, I want to commend the organisers of the session tonight. This is a beautiful setting and for nineteen years, I would like us to put our hands for Labour. Since I born, I never see hypocrisy at this level. The lawyers in town criticizing the lifeblood of this country and benefiting tremendously from the programmes of this Labour Government. Hypocrisy at the highest. The US, big mother, big father, US, giving these islands salt to eat and hide in the We must not benefit in no form. So as soon as we start to spread the wings, sanction. Mr Prime Minister, don't be a coward man. We could fight them in the world union, we could fight them out there. Don't let nobody tell you about we're small. We tell our...
You have thirty seconds, I'm sorry, I have thirty seconds to wrap up because we're right on...
The question I have to ask my Prime Minister, like I asked you last year, how you do it? How you get it do? Mr Prime Minister, how you get this thing do? How you get St Kitts afloat? How you kept St Kitts afloat in these rough times? Explain to us how you get St Kitts, how you kept St Kitts afloat?
Thank you very much for that, Mr Prime Minister. All right, so what we're going to do is if you have any other questions, we're going to try and line up as many of them as possible and then respond to them in that order so we can make the best use of our time. The question, if you have any questions, now is the time to come up. Now is the time to come up. The question from Nevis was, Mr Prime Minister, you can take this under. The question from Nevis was, there have been allegations that government is not making their financial contributions towards the operation of the Nevis Island Administration and so they are unable to carry out their functions. This is the allegation. Is there any truth to this? That the federal government is not fulfilling its obligations financially to the people of Nevis and the Nevis Island Administration? And so they're complaining that their hands are tied in respect of taking care of certain things and they're somehow left out. That's the question that's coming in there. Is there any other question that anybody would like to put in at this time from the floor? We still have a little bit to go. No? Mr Prime Minister?
Right. To answer the first question that came from Terry in particular, the answer of course is that we as a team work exceptionally hard. That's the answer. We just work. And with the grace of God, we have succeeded. And I want to use really, I want to use this opportunity to commend again the members of the Cabinet, the advisers who have worked with the government over the years, the public servants, the top public servants, the middle, the law, all of whom I'm sure have borne great difficulties, especially during the two-year period, two-three years when we had suspended increments. We want to thank them for understanding. And that is why we can assure you that whatever benefits are there now to be derived, the public servants and the people generally of St Kitts and Nevis will benefit. That is our obligation, that is our duty. We've done it together as a team and that's what I think we should continue to do in this country, working together as a team. The question from Nevis, the federal government has not been charged with any obligation under the constitution that it is not pursuing. It is not our duty to provide money to the Nevis Island Administration. The constitution gives the right to the Nevis Island Administration to raise its own finances and look after its own affairs. Whatever is the obligation that we have to carry out as a federal government, we are doing it. There's a tendency to scapegoat the federal government all the time, but this is not one that we shall accept. We continue to engender good relationship between the federal government and the Nevis Island Administration, between the people of Nevis and the people of St Kitts. We are one people. The governmental construct that we have came out of negotiations between the people of Nevis, the representatives at that time, and those who were the leadership of St Kitts. What is there today is as a result of negotiations. Whatever the government of St Kitts and Nevis can do to enhance the livelihoods of the people of Nevis, we shall do so. But we have to be very careful because there are certain constitutional constraints that we have. I want to assure the people of Nevis that whatever we can do, we will continue to do. And we have been doing a lot in support of the people of Nevis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There is a text that came in as well and this one is directed to Conor Smith now. The question is, what is your opinion on term limits?
All right, very quickly, that is a very, very pertinent question and is one that we should look at. In our discussion of constitutional reform, I think that we should examine what are the benefits of term limits, whether or not is term limits or time limits. However, my opinion is this, we live in a very small country where we have always, throughout history, provided our own term limits because we decide who we want to be in power. And we have a democratic right and duty for on election day, if we decide that a Prime Minister is doing very well and he deserves five more years with his party, we have the right to do so. And if we feel, as this public has shown, oh, time and time again, that if they become disaffected, as the case was in 1980 that allowed a change of government, as was the case in 1993 and 1995, when they affected a change of government, that we, the general public as a group, are always well informed to make a decision that is most viable for us and for our family. So my view is that I take the position that the mechanism already exists for term limits. We can go to the polls every five years and decide who we want to run our affairs. However, that does not negate us from having the opportunity to discuss the viability or the ramifications of looking at the potential of assigning term limits or time limits for positions in office. That would be my response today.
Thank you very much for that, very appropriate answer. Giving an opportunity again to the floor, if there's anybody else who would like to...
Good night, my name is Alvarin Jackson. My question is about the Commissioner. And whether, yeah, they are here, Michael Pawell has been saying that Commissioner is not, wasn't a police. And he's been saying it over and over, right? And it's thinking like, about him with the small people, like many people been talking about it, right? They want to know how the Prime Minister could go and pick up this man wasn't a police. I'd like to hear a little bit more about it, please.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Ma'am, please come and answer your question so we can take these two at the same time. Come right ahead.
Good evening to the panelists and also to the comrades and members and friends present. Last year or the year before, the CCM Party campaigned about reducing mortgage rates in the commercial banks for customers. I'm a banker and I'm not aware that the government can tell the commercial banks what rates to use. Here in St Kitts, I'm also hearing PLOP, Unity Concoction, all the different names, Team Unity, using a similar campaign. There are a lot of people in the public who literally believe these things, that yes, we should vote for them because they're going to assist us with the reduction on the interest rate on mortgages. Again, I'm not aware that that can be done here. So I really would like you guys as government ministers to address this and let the public know whether this is really possible from your standpoint, because I am not aware. Every day we get the different rates that come down from Canada and they're implemented like yesterday.
Thank you very much.
I think I should attempt to answer in particular the last question. The only rate that governments can become engaged in, and I use the experience of the Monetary Council of the Central Bank, which is responsible for maintaining the EC dollar and the rate of that dollar against the US dollar, is the deposit rate. The Monetary Council at every meeting, and we meet twice a week at least, always look at the deposit rate. In other words, by law, what rate of interest the bank must pay you when you deposit your money into the bank? And we have consistently, since I have been there, maintained the deposit rate at three percent, the minimum rate that you can get if you place money into the bank. We've had several representations and presentations made to us, the Ministers of Finance, in the eight countries that make up the Monetary Council of the Central Bank, to lower the deposit rate. And we have consistently maintained it at three percent. We are saying to the bankers, you cannot pay any depositor into your bank interest less than three percent. Of course, there's a, there's a, there's a school of thought that says, if you were to lower the deposit rate, then the interest rate at which they are lending will also be lowered. That has not proven to be our case in the eastern Caribbean. And you're right, my dear, the politicians cannot dictate to any bank what the lending rate would be, cannot. So you're correct. I think it is again an attempt to fool the electorate. Because the CCM said it, have they done anything about it? They can't. Because they have no influence whatsoever on the interest rate at which you are loaned money by the commercial banks here in St Kitts and Nevis or in the eastern Caribbean as the case may be.
All right, it's been indicated to me that we need to...
Oh, well, I thought that that was just nonsense. Because I want to say to Alvar, that I participated in an exercise conducted to interview three, four, five different persons for the job of Commissioner of Police. We had to first receive applications, we had to first receive their CVs and we had to have recommendations. Only people who are foolish will continue to say that the Commissioner of Police is not a police or was not a police when he has brought members of the previous police forces that he served in here to help the people of St Kitts. It merits no real answer.
A final one, this is directed, there's no person, but I'm going to direct it to our Minister of Health who sits at the table. The person is desiring an update on the BHS situation, if there is any word at all on what is happening here.
Sure, I'm the right person. As far as I'm aware, we're still awaiting the Carver report. So, and when Carver was here, they did all the tests. So we're not in a position to say what the findings are without first having the Carver report.
Okay, and that's a fair answer. And so we'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. I'd like to give anyone at the head table who would have a few closing words to do so at this time. Does anybody would like to just...
Apart from thanking each and every one of you to be here, I want to thank you for your active participation and you deserve a tremendous round of applause. In support of what is our first conversations for progress. This series is new and it shall continue. Keep your ears tuned... Keep your ears tuned for the next venue and the next time. God bless you. Get home safely.
Thank you so very much. And as the Prime Minister said, get home safely. Next week, Thursday, the venue is to be announced, 7:30 PM. We do this again.